Okay, folks, I think it is six o'clock. It is Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. Colette, we'll start with roll call. Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
And Todd Casper is excused. Okay, the first item on our agenda and the only action tonight, action item tonight is the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have the council minutes from February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the regular meeting. Payment of bills, we have financial reports for February. I have no appointments to boards and commissions. I had hoped to hear that we had volunteers stepping up at the recent community fair at the library, but I haven't heard about that. Licenses, we have one- and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol, as in your packet, a taxi vehicle license is in your packet, and a temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages at Saint Mary's Parish this coming Friday night, March fifteenth, for their fish fry from four thirty to six thirty. There are several banner permits, or banner permit, October twenty-ninth to October twenty-sixth for the farmer's market, street closings for the farmer's market, North Bonson along the City Park and East Mineral from North Bonson to North Fourth on Saturdays, six thirty to one, May fourth to October twenty-sixth. Irving Place from Park Place to North Bonson, North Court and North Bonson between Main and Irving Place for the alternate Farmer's Market site for Dairy Days and the UWP Homecoming Parade and Sweet Treats on Main, six thirty to one, Irving Street from Park Place to North Bonson, North Bonson and North Court from Irving Place to Main Street for Platteville Night Market in conjunction with the cruise on Main and Music Fest on Saturday, July twentieth, from two to eight. We have a run walk permit from High Vibe, High Vibe for their Saint Patty's five K walk and run on Saturday, March sixteenth, from ten thirty to noon, and we do have a proclamation for National Library Week.
I would ask that item F-one under permits be discussed separately.
Discuss separately? Okay, how about the rest?
Is there an appointment to public transportation?
Yes, thank you, Bob. I do remember. I knew. I looked back through my email. All right. Appointment to the Public Transportation Committee would be Ela Kakadee. And Colette, that's K-A-K-D-E.
Kakadee, thank you.
Okay? Sorry. Okay, now we have, do I have a motion for everything but F-one, which is the banner for the Platteville Farmer's Market?
Also move.
Agreed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Colette will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, item about the request from the Platteville Farmer's Market for a banner from April twenty-ninth to October twenty-sixth. I believe we have approved two other banners that would interfere with that, so I mean, the approvals have already been given, so we're not able to.
But they knew that other groups were going to need banners during that period. Maybe not.
As far as sharing.
Well, sharing, they would take theirs down and have someone else put up, but maybe I misread it. I thought I saw that. Sure.
Actually, you have to come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Hi, folks. Most of you know me, I think. So I'm Jenna Phillips. I am the Platteville Farmer's Market operator. So I did put in a letter with a packet stating our understanding. That was included, yes, Colette?
Yes, the banner permit with the
page one.
With your email, yep. Yeah, the letter's there.
I did put in a letter with the understanding that other folks would be asking for banners and that we would give way for so in between the requests is what we're asking for essentially.
Asking, I mean, a new group asking for a banner?
So in years-
And then it's a question.
So I know we're gonna have Dairy Days, and I know we'll have summer, probably summer Music Fest in the chamber, and these may have already been approved. I don't know. My, my understanding is that this is not space that can be quote-unquote "shared." Your banner would have to come down but for another banner to go up, so I don't know that I would call that shared space.
That's our understanding as well. And in years past, Candace would communicate with us saying, hey, someone asked for that, and we say, all right. So it's just, it's just a fill-in when you guys don't have someone asking for a banner essentially, because that would be with the DOT and the amount of car traffic there, that is the easiest way for us to get out to folks that we still do exist.
How long is Dairy Days up?
I can't, I can't. We may have already approved that, and I don't remember what the request was. It wouldn't, I would assume it was two weeks, but I don't, I don't really know.
And last year, this same situation did occur.
Okay.
Where there was multiple, and Nick, our street superintendent, actually said it's easier to swap when there's a banner up there.
Okay.
So he was on board with that as well.
All right, so do I have a motion about this?
Move to approve F-one on the consent agenda.
Back in. All right, Ken, or Colette will hold.
All right, I'm sorry, I missed who.
Oh, that was Jason and Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I have no citizens that have registered to speak, citizens' observations, comments, and petitions. I would point out that prior to our next meeting, the fire department will have its pancake breakfast. That'll be on March twenty-fourth at the high school. I would also point out that the museum has its ongoing lyceum series, and there will be one this Sunday. I can't tell you what it's about, but I can tell you that there is one this Sunday. Anybody else?
I wanted to point out that the, due to the current staffing levels at the library, that the library had decided to close on Sundays starting March fourth, and it'll go through possibly until September. And also that next week, I believe the sixteenth, is at one o'clock. There's an event going on at the library that they wanted people to come out and see. There's a one that hosted.
Around the Farm Table with Inga Witcher.
Right, so that's happening.
Yep.
I'm glad you said that name. Inga, Inga, I was trying to get it, Inga.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question of Lynn with the library. That's a long time, and that, and outside, I mean, are they recruiting staff or?
Oh.
Only March.
Yeah, so here's-
That's six months.
Yeah, here's the-
Seems unreasonable.
Yeah.
From March to September. So the recent, I'm just gonna quote what was the note here, that we recently hired two part-time employees who have not thoroughly been trained and are not yet of our part of the weekend and evening rotation. So it is a staffing, it's a staffing, definite staffing thing. We bought some people and we just brought them up.
Well, Lynn, I think you should carry the concern back from the council to the library board that a six-month change is pretty drastic.
We were only open three hours on Sundays, but we did have people who work kind of regulars, and we did have some other things going on, so this is gonna be a hit. And the, I don't know how the information is getting out to the community, other than probably being posted, but it was a decision that that they hated to, we hated to come to. We really fought about coming to this. But if you don't have any, then people are getting burnt out.
Okay, reports from boards, commissions, and committees, the Historic Preservation Commission, January sixteen meeting. Ken, anything?
I have no additions to that meeting.
Okay, museum board, Bob?
No additions to the minutes, but most of the department chairs know this, but I don't know if all the board does. The new director's been hired. His name Bebhorn. He's twenty-fifteen alum of UWP. Starting April first. He's just wrapping up stuff in New York where he currently is employed. And the miners' ball went really well.
Okay, Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
On February sixth? I do want to acknowledge the fact that department has produced their twenty-twenty-three annual report. It is available on the site. I encourage everyone to read it. It's full of good information. It really explains a lot about what the department's done. A lot of accolades are due to things that are in this report, so good job. Doug and Relay, our congratulations back to the department.
Okay, other reports in your packet were the water sewer financial report for February, the airport financial report for February, and department progress reports.
One question. Just a matter of finding out what something means. And this to the city manager.
Yes, sir.
ROC cohort program. Maybe it's gonna be discussed later, because I didn't frankly get through everything here, because I was working on my taxes, which are due in the fifteenth. But what does this mean? And I encourage you, when you put in things like this, spell them out, so we know what they are. ROC. It's about the third point down.
Yes, it's the exact language. It's rejuvenish, or what is it?
Do you find it?
Yep. The ROC cohort program, continued participation in the ROC cohort program, learning about equity in rental housing and workforce.
Would you repeat that, please, city manager?
I didn't say anything yet. I'm, where is my acronym here? It gets lost in, I mean, they could, there we go, reinventing our communities, thank you. That is the, the vision of it. The purpose of it is as defined there. It is to look for equity in rental housing. Is, because then the study, it's a regional type of an effort.
Reinventing our community?
Okay. Then we'll go on to the, there are no action items tonight. We'll go on to the information and discussion items. The first is award contract two dash twenty-four, West Adams Street Reconstruction. Howard?
Yes, thank you.
Says information only tonight.
Thank you. This is for full reconstruction, water, sanitary, storm sewer and street, of West Adams between Chestnut and Court Street, in support of the new fire facility. We held our bid opening. There were five bidders. Bill Lepti is a new bidder for Platteville as our low bidder. They did projects for other communities in our area, and reference checks were, came out good. We are a little over budget, but staff is recommending that we wait until after Thursday's bid opening for Soden and Grace to see where we are before coming back with any specific recommendations on, on what to do regarding the overage for this project.
The question I have about this project is, excuse me, you're gonna use concrete, correct?
Concrete for the intersection, correct.
Yes. So if you don't have it in your head at the present time, bring it next time. But I'd like to know what you predict to be the life of the concrete? What's gonna be the condition, thickness of the concrete? The use of rebar as far as the concrete? And also, what's gonna be done as far as the base underneath the concrete? Because I've had concrete put in my driveways, and if they don't go down deep enough, you can have one side of it cracking because they're not taking out enough of the clay. So how deep do you go down with concrete in a street to get to a good base that's gonna make it solid?
And I don't think we need to have that tonight. Howard, I would like you to see-
You can bring it up next time.
I, I would like you to see that add, I would like that information added, written, in written form to the description that you have in this memo. So Ken, you'll have it in plenty of time. Dan and Howard will work together. It'll be added to the memo. And if you have questions after seeing that, but we'll have it in written form within the memo. Any other questions?
That's the question for that one.
Okay. Then let's move on to the next one, which is, well, let's get to my award contract six dash twenty-four for sidewalk repairs.
Yes, we do an annual sidewalk repair contract. We had a base bid and, and four alternate bids. We opened two bids, the low bidder being R and T vaguely excavating out of Monroe, also a new contractor. We've vetted the company and staff recommends awarding the base bid only to this company.
Okay, questions on this? The base bid is for sidewalk crossing of Pine Street, including the southwest corner of Pine and Water by Ruxton.
And-
Plus the ADA curb ramp in the southwest corner of Bonson and Main by Morrissey's.
Correct.
Okay. I was, I have that one circled here, because at Bonson, Bonson and Main, I saw it last week where that ramp was torn out in part and-
Oh, it's gonna be replaced.
Not, not safe.
Let's move on to award contract ten dash twenty-four, weed and grass mowing.
Yes, this is our annual contract for non-compliance of our ordinance regarding lawns. This is the same contractor as last year. There's a ten-dollar increase to ninety dollars per hour, ninety-dollar minimum. On top of that, we add a fifty-dollar administrative fee. We had no problems with the contractor last year, so we're recommending re-awarding, awarding for this year to Holman Lawn Care.
Questions?
I have a question again. It's, it's you, you have it here on a city inspect and also complaint basis. Are you go, are you going to go out and do it on the city inspection basis? And not just leave it up to people that live around someplace to turn in a complaint? Because some people that live next to the people with the tall grass, et cetera, don't like to complain about it, because they don't know what they're gonna get back in the way of retaliation, retaliation by some of their neighbors, frankly. So what, what are you gonna use this year? Are you gonna use code enforcement officers to go out and actually select or pick out these areas which need, which need mowing? Instead of having somebody at the neighbor turn in the complaint?
In the course of the duties of the code enforcement inspector, the, that person will do self-generation as, as the person is going around town. We always, we also always accept complaints.
So Howard, you're saying both?
We do.
The code enforcement person will inspect property or will see themselves, but also they will reply and follow up on complaints.
Correct.
So it's an and, not an or.
So it's gonna be done.
We'll inspect properties and receive complaints rather than or.
Correct. Did I say or?
You said or.
Sorry.
So it's an and rather than a-
Yes, I, I will correct that.
Okay.
And.
Thank you, because.
Next item on the agenda then is contract twelve dash twenty-four, alleys.
Yes. We have a, a budget for doing work on alleys. We intended to conduct two small projects within our budget. One, paving the alley from Roundtree over to Alden Avenue without working on the steep approach on Alden Avenue. The other was to repair the culvert head wall in an alley that extends eastward from Water Street. The bids came in over budget, so we're going to recommend rejecting these bids, and then we will rebid for just paving only of that one alley that we've already identified, and we're looking to potentially do a different alley so that we can be within the budget.
Right. And then we have the annual stormwater report.
Yes. Every year, as part of our permit requirements with the DNR, we are required to submit a report. This is our annual report. It's similar to the ones that we've done in previous years with revised data for budgets, amount of stall applied, and other specific items that we need to report. So it's an information only. There is no action required by the council. But if somebody has questions or comments, you can see me later and we can, we can discuss those.
I do have one general question. And that is, when did this, what should I call it, requirement for a report come into existence? Because I was not on the council in the eighties, so and Harrison Park was being built before the eighties, and so my question is, at that time, when I talked to DNR, they said that I had to go see the city of Platteville as far as preventing the movement of soil into the Roundtree branch. So when did this program come in, which is now, I would call a point source program for the city of Platteville? So do you have any idea when this program came into being as far as a requirement by the city of Platteville?
Requirement for the city of Platteville came as a result of the two thousand and ten census. I believe the actual permit was twenty twenty, or twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve came into existence?
Well, only because of our population.
Because, because our-
This report became required because of our population when we went over ten thousand. So I, Howard doesn't know when it came into existence statewide. Who knows how long other municipalities have been having to file it, but when we got to a population of ten thousand, we had to start doing, had to start filing the report.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, before that, though, the city was responsible for preventing the loss of soil to the Roundtree branch. Twenty two, what'd you say for year, twenty twelve?
Twenty ten was the year that we got to ten thousand. Twenty twelve was the first year we filed the report. Okay, let's move on to item F, award limited salvaging rights to the OE Gray Building.
I have further question, but I'll ask it next time.
Okay.
Madam President, staff is recommending to award a bid for the salvage rights of a limited materials of OE Gray building with Platteville Real Estate Investments LLC of Platteville, Wisconsin, entered into a contract for payment of one thousand five hundred and one dollars. This is for a this is for a this is for a limited salvage efforts, so it is, the restrictions, the limitations that are in place with it are materials of the external envelope, exterior walls.
Mom, do you think that this resort, and we need to get off the line? Do you think the bad in resort?
And then all the structures on the outside fencing and such cannot be damaged during the salvaging efforts. So again, it's a very limited type of salvaging effort. It is to clear out what can in preparation for raising OE Gray in the fall, October, November timeframe of two thousand and twenty-four. Madam President?
Questions? Ken?
I have one question for clarification. So the company has to provide to the city, give to the city fifteen hundred dollars?
Fifteen hundred and one dollars.
Is there a one dollar there too?
It looks like fifteen hundred and one dollars.
Okay, my question is, if it's beyond, for anything that they, that they can retrieve that's beyond that amount, is there?
They have, they have rights to everything in there that doesn't impose the limitations for that amount. Correct.
And we have already, our staff and our people have already gone in and salvaged things that we needed.
That's correct.
So this is kind of a second salvage, if you want to call it that. We've re-appropriated items that we needed.
It's the last value out before
Right.
it gets torn down.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next item on the agenda, conditional use permit and sidewalk cafe permit for one thirty Market Street. Joe?
Yeah, so the Speakeasy Fifty-Fifty Tavern would like to get a conditional use permit to expand their outdoor eating, drinking area onto the front porch of that building. So they had previously gotten approval back in two thousand and twenty-one to do the rear deck and a couple patio chairs and picnic tables on the north side, so they'd expand it to the south. So that's the first approval. The second one would be approval request for a sidewalk cafe permit along Market Street, so it'd be partially on the public sidewalk and then partially on a landscape area in front of their property. So they would just put up two small tables and then four chairs within that area. So that would be the second request.
Okay, questions?
So the second set of tables would be up on the porch and down in the street?
So they, they would have tables and chairs on the porch as part of the conditional use permit. Then the sidewalk cafe permit would be actually down at sidewalk level. So it's a, it's a, the, the, there are two tables and four chairs, so they'd be, they've got a retaining wall, then a little landscape area, and then the public sidewalk. So it'd be within that landscape area and partially on the public sidewalk. So they would have to keep a, a clear distance of four feet on the public sidewalk, and then the tables would kind of go.
So they intend to leave that retaining wall?
The retaining wall would stay. The landscaping next to the retaining wall would have to go.
Yeah, I have a-
I just don't see that there's room.
It, if you look at the dimensions, it just barely fits.
So what, I can't move my chair then? Is what, is that what you're saying? Because at any time,
Yes.
if somebody goes by and it's within four feet.
Right.
You.
Right.
Yeah.
So i- in that, really, you know, there's not that many of these that we've done in Platteville, but that really has been the only issue that's ever come up, is to make sure that they're not blocking the sidewalk. So the, the previous ones that have been approved have always been kind of with the, let's give it a shot and see how it goes, with the understanding if it doesn't work, we rescind it. So I think that, that was kind of the, the planning commission didn't say that, but that was really their only concern when this went to the planning commission, was to make sure that that
I, I have no concern.
Is.
Yeah, I have no concern with the condition- I I have no concern. Yeah, I have no concern with the conditional use permit. I do have a concern. I assumed that the retaining wall was going to go and they were going to provide a bit more space. Cause it doesn't, I mean, I can't even imagine putting the table there, but. But if they know it can be rescinded at any time, do we have a, do we have a rubric or anything?
Well, that that's why it's a a permit, sidewalk cafe permit. When we when we first set up that program, we did it as a permit rather than a conditional use type of a thing that it um it gives us flexibility to change the program.
To rescind the pre.
Change the conditions of the program completely at all people or specifically to that property. So we could rescind it just for this one, or we could say all sidewalk cafe have to have a five foot clearance. You know, we could do it either way.
Ken?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One, did the state get involved any at all in this? We were supposed to have a license committee meeting this week, but it was canceled. I'm new on the license committee, so I wanted to find out about whether the state is involved here as far as this being done.
I am not involved in the liquor license process, so I don't know the answer to that.
Well, maybe that can be answered next time. The next thing is the sound issue. When they came in for the for the table in the back, whatever they want to call it, there was a a problem, or I should say an issue as far as with the neighbor concerned about the amount of sound. And so there was an agreement that was, I'd say, drawn between these the applicants and the neighbor next door. So do you know if anything that's being done as far as the sound issue? Or it's you simply gonna leave it, say that, well, you're supposed to turn your your sound equipment away from the neighbor. Well, the the neighbor is very close as far as nearness to the spot.
Right.
So in the front there. So I'm just wondering, what are you doing about? Is that all you're gonna say about the sound?
So, well, as far as this particular request, the the neighbors have not made any contact one way or another regarding this one.
The neighbors have.
They've been notified. They've been notified, but they have not appeared yet. They have not made any contact with me about this.
So but they know about it because their plan commission would have informed.
Correct.
Inform the people.
Um so the 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 Plan Commission, the staff's recommendation is just that it's subject to the conditions that are in the uh ordinance, which does have some language regarding uh amplified sound, uh et cetera. So well, there there's nothing proposed other than that as part of this request.
It also has closing hours of ten P M.
Right. Yeah, that's in the pack. Correct.
So since this is on the front, I'm trying to remember what's next to it. One is the physical therapy.
Yes.
The other one, what's on the other side?
Cunningham House, owned by the church.
The church property, right?
Well, maybe the neighbor neighbors will show up next time.
It could be.
Thank you.
Okay, uh moving on to information and discussion resolution. Tide presents recommendations to the council, and I believe that's Clint with support from Bob and Lynn.
Madam President, you'll see a packet in there. Um the summary sheet begins on page two nineteen of two fifty one. Proposed resolution contains the recommendations provided by the task force uh in efforts to fill fulfill the charter goals established through resolution twenty three twenty eight. Um the main items that we'll be discussing here tonight is the recommendation, the proposals for the common council to adopt D E I initiatives as outlined in appendix A of the resolution, which we'll review, as well as create a permanent D E I committee and then amend the city's inclusivity statement. On the center of the summary sheet, then you'll see uh the breakdown of the proposed um task or the committee. Um please line item change the third bullet down where it says two members to one member. So you're looking at eleven members pointed by the council president, confirmed by the common council. One member of the common council, ten members at large, members of city residents. A three-year term with the chair of the committee selected majority vote of the seated committee members and staff by city manager and or designate. The functions of said committee would be to review progress reports and provide oversight on the city manager manager's delivery of adopted D E I initiatives. Evaluate D E I topics and provide reports and recommendations to the common council as requested and conduct public meetings with listening sessions focused on D E I topics. Uh the resolution also opposes proposes several items um that are would be handled directly by the city manager, which we'll discuss. Um going down then into the uh resolution, um you'll see a drafted resolution there. Again, I have to do apologize. I have one change on there for the number of uh appointees from the common council. It states on the second to lap paragraph on the first page that there would still be two. There would only be one. Um and that the resolution also then includes the change to your inclusivity statement, uh changing the word verbiage from task force to a D E I committee. Into the proposals for the D E I initiatives, you'll find those on two twenty three of two fifty one in your packets. Um it's broken down into a matrix. We tried to discuss and review these with the task force over several months, breaking them down into different categories. We broke them down. In one meeting, we discussed different city organizational initiatives. The next meeting, we talked on service delivery type initiatives. And then on the third one, we talked about community engagement initiatives. Um as language kind of spoke in the report that was issued following this document, um you'll see that a lot of the community engagement initiatives kind of gravitated towards uh functions and such that are kind of more traditional that you'd see provided through the county of health and human service type roles. We also looked at uh when the feasibility might be or the of trying to implement these over a short term, intermediate and long term and arrived at um a lengthy list of of uh different proposals. Those lists were put out to our task force uh through a uh web-based survey and we solicited feedback from them. The ten that rose to the top are on here and they're broken down into these categories. And again, these are uh put in here with the language to uh to action and to explore the feasibilities and possibilities of these. In addition, the paragraph below that on the bottom of page two twenty three of your packet, uh the city manager will implement the following initiatives: D E I training and foundational knowledge directed toward city leadership. Continue efforts to attract leadership from diverse experience. Uh exploring grant opportunities to fund D E I initiatives and possible community navigator. Adding pronoun preference and email signatures for city employees. Increase advertising of public wifi to encourage the use of Google translation and use of Q R codes to advertise communities, a community calendar, and then explore intern opportunities uh for communication and digital resource management of D E I initiatives. Um so it was quite a a lengthy process, uh many months in place. Um we had some good sessions with feedback. On top of information that was solicited through the meetings, we did have uh open Google docs and uh email communications that brought in some additional um ideas and initiatives that were evaluated through the process. Uh so I guess I'll maybe tee it up like that, and I would defer then to Chair Lynn if she wanted to make any additional comments before it was open to questions.
No, I just wanted to uh the just remind us of how important, even though the terms D E I are being modeled out, how important it is to plus remember that we are a city that has needs that reflect that. And so um it's really important, the team that got together. Um what they were phenomenal with come, you know, put coming up with ideas and and so um I totally stand by um city manager on the initiative.
Um do you also worked on this?
Yeah, I I really have nothing to add. Uh Clint and Lynn did a fantastic job coordinating. Oh, persons of different backgrounds on the committee, so it was a pretty inclusive committee. Um. narrowing them down to the ones that are a little bit more practical, practical and I guess achievable.
Okay, um I would suggest that uh folks take a look. I I have read the report a couple of times. I would suggest you read. And if you have questions of the initiatives or um anything prior to the next meeting, I would suggest you get a hold of Clint, Lynn, or Bob, since they all are knowledgeable how about how this report was created. So if you have questions, please contact them and then um uh depending on how many questions Cat, uh Clint, Lynn, and Bob get before we do agenda setting, we'll decide whether this will be on for information again on the twenty sixth and then action on the on the first meeting in April. Or if there are no questions, then we will take action at the next meeting. But I want to give everybody a chance to read through it, uh think about it, uh ferret out their questions. I have uh Clint, Bob, and Lynn adequate time to answer any of those questions or consider any of the um uh things that might be brought up.
I would maybe make one additional comment. Um I would say that not only is it important then on, you know, deciding what we're going to do, but probably just as equal as important as how you're going to do it. And in addressing that, I would say, um like we discussed about at our meetings and through meetings with the directors, is that a very big proponent of this is an evolution effort, not a revolution effort, meaning that it's an incremental type of a change. Um we don't plan on making solutions that are going to fix all problems necessarily, but it's going to advance us in those types of uh those types of values. And then uh from a from a employee type of perspective, I'm hoping this expands on our our basic tenants of service delivery of mindfulness and of uh basic manners, so.
Good.
I just have one. Basic question with the uh appendix for short-term initiatives. Um twenty four, twenty five observe M L K and Juneteenth holidays. Are we talking? I mean.
No, i- if if so, the decision's yet to happen on, like with an example here of observe the M L K and Juneteenth night uh holidays is what does it mean to observe? And some of the discussion points on are we going to close down services? Are we going to do a trainings? Are we going to do more educational types of things? Those decisions uh yet to be had. Um and again, it would be something that would be incremental versus we're doing this immediate type of thing. Obviously, we're past M L K day and I would want to make sure that we have time to respond to it from an employee's perspective as well as delivering services to the community if we were to uh take actions to close doors.
Okay, because my my reason for asking that is that under a cost assessment, it's zero additional budget expense, but two additional. My opinion is a cost to the city.
If if we were to engage in that.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh yes, it would be lost service provided. We're right now, the employees do have floating holidays, so we try to manage that and preserve doors open to maintain maintain services. That would be a change.
Okay, uh lead service line replacement loan program, Howard.
Yes, thank you. Uh we've done uh these L S L replacement programs since twenty sixteen. Until now, the funding mechanism allowed D N R to forgive one hundred percent of the loan. Basically call it a grant. It's it's a technical way. It's a loan, but then they forgive it all. Um that particular program was limited to schools, licensed daycares, and properties used for residential purposes. And uh in that time, we've uh done many lead service lines. We still have a hundred and ten known properties of these three are commercial properties. We did pass an ordinance to remove all L S L by the end of this year. The funding for this year is through the bipartisan infrastructure law. It has expanded funding to all properties, but it has limited the percentages of loan versus grant based on our community. Our split is twenty five percent loan. Um so no matter how much money we get from D N R, we have to pay back twenty five percent. We can't just, we can't just accept the seventy five percent that's that's going to be granted. We have, we have to do that. So right now, what this means is that the city has to pledge a revenue source for that loan repayment. And the three options that we have right now are basically nonutility funds, city geo debt or reserves or something like that. The other is that we submit an application to the Public Service Commission to increase water rates. Or we do what they call an alternative revenue pledge. And at this point, staff is recommending that we do option three, the alternative revenue pledge. And if that's adopted, we need to amend section seven oh four of our municipal code, adopt section seven oh five to authorize this process where we would uh basically give loans to the individual property owners. They would pay us back. If they don't pay us back, it goes on the tax roll as a special charge. Um and then the last is to establish an interest rate, administrative fee, and repayment periods. Um so, you know, hopefully this makes sense. We can get this uh put out there so that we can get the information out to the people and the plumbers so that they can get the the work done this year.
Questions? Howard, uh wasn't there, I mean, I know that we established that we all lead service lines are to be removed in our community by the end of this year. Wasn't there also a federal mandate or a state mandate about removal of lead service lines?
There is a federal mandate. I I don't recall the actual date, but it's farther in the future from what.
It's not this year, but I don't think it's much more than next year.
Uh I I would have to uh look that up.
That up. Any questions on the options? I think uh but the um staff note also presents the um pros and cons of each option, so. Okay. I believe that's the end of our information items.
Closed session, Madam President. I'm anticipating we would probably talk for about five minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion. I would need a motion to go to closed section. Closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty five, parent one, parent G. For the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, we'd be conferring with ling uh legal counsel over the ingo girl claim.
I'll move.
Okay. Uh we'll vote what? Oh, I should note, I should note that we we will return from closed session and it is possible that we'll take action after closed session if necessary. Okay, now we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.